So we are, uh, county board supervisors, we're working out the amended notice of meeting and agenda. Tuesday, December twenty first, two thousand twenty one, six o'clock. Receipt of evidence. Upper notice.
County Board of Supervisors, December twenty first, two thousand twenty one, meeting notice and agenda was posted in the government center building in two places. Posted on the county website on December tenth, two thousand twenty one, and was published in a legal newspaper the week of December thirteenth, two thousand twenty one. In addition, on Friday, December tenth, two thousand twenty one, at one oh three P M., the Office of the County Clerk distributed copies of such notice of meeting to supervisors and media via email or mail. The notice of amended agenda was posted in the government center, posted on the county website, and copies of such notice of meeting were distributed to supervisors via email or mail at three seventeen P M. on Thursday, December sixteenth, two thousand twenty one.
Joe, is this proper notice?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Roll call.
Brad Olson.
Here.
Doug Rowdy.
Here.
Pete Wardall.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Tracy LeBlanc.
Here.
Dan Ruck.
Here.
Mike Richard.
Here.
Sharon Kelly.
Here.
Tim O'Connell.
Here.
Amy Middleton.
Here.
DeLuque.
Here.
Fran Duncanson.
Here.
Arcan.
Here.
John Bonaprise.
Here.
Joe Demeling.
Here.
John, do you want to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Following the pledge allegiance, I'd like to have a moment of silence for, uh, former supervisor Bob Lake. Bob passed away last week. A funeral was yesterday up in Webster, and I represented, uh, Polk County and took a card up from Visa Ross. Bob White Maryland worked in our clerk's office for me. Have moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America. I give you the right of bodily wishes, thanks, of a nation under God, and to this day, liberty and justice for all.
I can, I'll make one comment too about Bob and John. You said it perfect. I got to know Bob a little bit being on the board here in this last summer. I had lunch with him and a couple of his buddies. Like John said, I sat there for an hour.
He didn't say much.
I didn't have, I, yeah, I didn't say nothing. Bob talked the whole time. And, uh, it was nice to get to know him, and, uh, I know he cared a lot about county and what happens here.
He was born and raised in Illinois, and, and it was pretty interesting, his history. He was a, a long time town chairman and county board chair down in Illinois before he came.
Well, you know what else he supported was equestrian and horses. He was a guy giving a little pat on the back saying he's glad to see the county letting horses on trails and promoting that. I know he and his family had horses most of their lives. That's.
Yeah.
Anyone else got any stories about Bob?
That we can see here.
Jade, you got something good?
Oh, a lot of good things. Met her in ten, hour and a half with them one time, and. He asked me, what did you tell him? I says, my name.
Good one, Jade.
Yeah. Bob always had a lot of, a lot of fun. Good ideas, and he was a. I just threw a lot of things. Of course, but, uh, not him. Was a real asset. Didn't always agree with him, but what Bob liked.
Number five, if anything on the agenda, we'll handle that. We have an approval for the amended agenda.
I shall move as presented and amended.
Second, any second, any discussion? Oh, um, yeah, Vince, you do.
Yeah, we, we took a look under number nine, the General Government Committee, and we've got A through G and, uh, resolutions to discuss. And it made more sense to kind of lump them together in groups, so, uh, we're proposing doing A, D, F, and G together first because they all deal with borrowing, lending, and the, uh, government center, uh, finance situation. So we would do A, D, F, and G, and then B, C, D after that.
Is there an omission on the COVID update, or is that? We usually have it on our agenda.
Yeah, so the agenda was so full, we usually have Chad do the, the, uh, substance abuse one too. And because we thought this might go along, I'd ask administrator is going to give us, uh, Tanya gave him information. He's going to do an administrative report, so Tanya didn't sit here all night. But that's the only reason why.
I met with Tanya yesterday. She said that there isn't. It's pretty much normal.
Vince will give us an update here. Okay, so that's the amended agenda. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Same sign carried. All right, so we're on number seven, correct? Matters offered for adoption on consent agenda. Motion to approve? Jay and Tracy, any discussion? Mike?
Could someone explain, these are all appropriate on this map that was distributed?
No, no, that's something total. That deals with plant fall.
What, what is prompting all these?
They do them every month like this, but Kim, uh, the chairman of the committee that put all these through, right? Wouldn't that be you, O'Connell?
Yes, they're just different zoning maps that they're changing in each township, and it, we seem to have two, three almost every month.
Honesty.
And it's how, yes.
Towns usually approve it before it gets passed, so that's why we just push it through.
Each one of these were discussed in your committee?
And, uh, yeah, and there was no other, nobody was against any of these three. There's nothing.
No further discussion. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Close, same sign, carried. So we're at public comment. Three minutes per person. Do we have public comment?
Yes. Consider seat.
Sit here?
Yep. Okay. For whatever you're comfortable with.
Oh, yeah, I'd love to stand.
Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Lisa Door, and I live in the great town of Lake Town, and I'm here to comment on agenda item number twelve, the swine CAFO ordinance. I start by saying none of my comments are misinformation or lies. Um, in fact, I can provide documentation for anything that I say tonight if you're interested in background material. Specifically, I'm here to remind you that the CAFO, uh, swine CAFO ordinance does not protect Polk County families, and it is also not legally defensible. And, uh, when this CAFO moratorium process, uh, when the CAFO moratorium was passed in October of two thousand nineteen, a lot of us were excited to have an opportunity for an open and productive process. Unfortunately, that did not happen, and the productive, any productive efforts have been blocked since day one. No Citizens Committee was convened to look at this complex issue like you've done on Parks and Trails, which has been very successful. No outside experts were brought in to help us understand the issues. Again, unlike the Parks and Trails where tens of thousands of dollars have been spent to bring in experts to help us understand. And the product of this awful process has been a really bad, awful swine CAFO ordinance. Not one of the hundred and sixty people who testified on this ordinance back in July of two thousand twenty supported it. No one supported it. So what's wrong with the ordinance? Um, I'm just going to give a couple of examples. I obviously can't get them all in here, but the first one is that families that live in towns that have been zoned eight twenty, um, are now officially living in the CAFO sacrifice zone. And what that means is that hog factories can be built in those sacrifice zones with an infinite number of hogs, uh, about two hundred feet from their neighbors. So we're talking about less than a football field away from their neighbors, and families that live in towns like mine that are not zoned have absolutely no coverage from the CAFO ordinance. And the, one of the many things that are missing from it is, uh, an air pollution protection. There's no protection in this ordinance at all for the millions of pounds of hydrogen sulfide and ammonia that are emitted by it. But the most striking thing about the ordinance is that it's not legally defensible. Um, I have here, and if anyone wants to see it, a copy of the letter that was written by the Department of Agriculture. The county council asked the Department of Agriculture to review the ordinance. They came back with three very specific items that were wrong with the ordinance. The first one is you can't have a swine-only ordinance. You can't have a single species unless you can show for some scientific reason that a single species is appropriate. The second issue is that you have to have your standards that you set in the, uh, in the ordinance based on, um, reasonable and scientifically defensible findings of fact. And this ordinance has no findings of fact in it at all. And then the final issue is that the, the ordinance is just not.
Your three minutes is up. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
That's it for public comment.
All right, I would like to just make again, public comments when, when they're misrepresenting the truth. Ms. Doris said no experts. I can recall the D N R being involved, DAT CAP being involved, our corporation council being involved, our land and water department being involved. I would consider them all experts. She also said there's no protections in the townships currently under our shoreline zoning. It's not allowed, so that does affect every unzoned township. So when you stand up and you say everything you have is the truth, nothing but the truth, you need to be careful on misrepresenting that fact, so. It's too bad that this just keeps happening at public comment, misinformation. Anyways, public comment is closed. Uh, we're going to A, E, F, and G, resolution number sixty one twenty one. We'll start with resolution to amend the two thousand twenty-two budget to borrow funds for the government center update. You want to do them resolution by resolution, Chad, like you have?
Uh, do this, go back, Chad.
Are you gonna?
So Vince asked me to put together like four slides to kind of sum up these four resolutions, hopefully to answer some questions on the front side, then we can work through each one, but I think maybe the slides will be. So just to kind of pull together. At November thirtieth meeting, you authorize the administrator to proceed with preparing the borrowing from revenue, right? That's what we did in November. So at this meeting, we're going to address resolutions sixty one twenty one, sixty four twenty one, sixty eight twenty one, and sixty nine twenty one, because they all have to do with that. And the four areas they cover, adjusting the two thousand twenty-two budget for seven point seven to eight point two million for the project. We budgeted when we created the two thousand twenty-two budget. We budgeted seven point seven million because that was the cost from L H B at the time. You heard in November that the number's at eight point two, so that's a budget amendment to our budget. It has nothing to do with the note or anything, but it's the formal adjustment to our budgets. Our budget adequately reflects the estimated. Okay, so in two thousand eighteen, a resolution was passed that said any tax, deed, sale, profit exceeding one hundred thousand dollars. The administrators to prepare a resolution at the end of the year and apply that excess towards the outstanding general obligation debt. So that's what resolution sixty four twenty one deals with. It's a hundred and sixty-two thousand, three dollars and forty-two cents. So we are prepaying a hundred and fifty thousand of excess, uh, principal as well as the interest due through December twenty seventh is what I've got the close date set for right now. The sixty-eight twenty one is refinancing the remainder of the existing debt. It's two point one percent. After we prepay the hundred and fifty thousand, we'll have seven million fifty thousand left in the two thousand seventeen general obligation debt. This is what you said proceed with, uh, so we're refinancing at the two point one percent from the two point five five. Why do we have to do one in December, one in January? Once we got the go-ahead on November thirtieth, we got a bond lawyer. We met with the bank. We started getting things together. A bank can only do a direct placement to a client, a bank Bremer size, can only do a direct placement to a client for ten million dollars in total any calendar year. So they have to refinance in two thousand twenty-one to seven million fifty thousand, and then loan out the eight point two million in two thousand twenty-two. The other thing is the additional loan has to be fifteen days after the closing of the refinance. So presently, the refinancing, if you adopt the note tonight, will close on the twenty ninth, and then you'll see January eighteenth is when the new note will be presented to you for the additional, uh, financing. Next calendar year, more than fifteen days from close. The last resolution, sixty-nine twenty one, is a declaration of formal intent to borrow eight point two million. This is a recommendation from our bond attorney. We hired a bond attorney, separate corporation counsel that specializes. And he said the recommended process is you do a formal intent, and then you do the note subsequently when you're doing new bond. So what this resolution says, and I'll try to go through the broad overview of them, uh, that resolution says we intend to borrow update. Highlights from the resolution, sixty-one twenty one, as I said, it amends the capital budget for next year, increases that line item, the increase is based on the design numbers from L H B. This requires a two-thirds vote because it is a budget. Sixty-four twenty one, this amends the two thousand twenty-one operating budget. This is taking that tax, deed, profit in the two thousand twenty-one budget, transferring it from the treasurer's office line item to pay on debt service. That again takes a two-thirds vote because it's amending the twenty twenty-one. Sixty-eight twenty one, this is an actual note. It's a very lengthy document. It looks like a mortgage because that's essentially what it is. That's the, that's the note embedded in the resolution that the bond lawyer prepared. It reduces our interest rate two point five five to two point one percent. It refinances the existing seven million fifty thousand in debt. The payments you'll see in the payment schedule in it go through two thousand twenty-seven, so that note is paid off in two thousand twenty-seven. We're making a large lump sum payment in two thousand twenty-two. We've already budgeted two point four million, which is our debt payment each year. So since we won't have any new debt payment due till two thousand twenty-three, we're making an advanced lump sum in February of twenty-two, which also saves us some interest. It authorizes the signing of the note with Bremer Bank, authorizes the administrator, uh, the chair has to sign it, I have to sign it, the treasurer has to sign it. It authorizes that be executed tomorrow. If it passes tonight, and it requires a simple majority vote of the former president because it's a refinance. Resolution sixty-nine twenty one, a declaration of formal intent. It says the board intends to, they intend to place a levy upon the county, but it's not actually a note. The note will come in January. It directs any borrowing to be used for government center or justice center capital improvements with county board approval. Let me explain this one. When we met with bond counsel and our financial advisor, uh, over these past couple of weeks, since November thirtieth, the bond lawyer and financial advisor both said, if the board, if there's any chance that the board is not going to spend the full eight point two million of the borrowing on that project, and there's any other large capital projects in your capital plan, it gives the board flexibility if they put in that other area of capital project. The justice center is our other area on the capital plan. Does not mean the board has to ever borrow the money to spend, but if you don't put that in there, then over the next twelve months, when you can draw off that line, if the board were to choose, if something came up at the justice center or chose to do the rough or chose to do the sheriff's range or anything. If it's not in there, we would have to go for a whole new borrow. It can be removed, but if you remove it, then this note is solely for this facility. I did ask, when the bond counsel presented this, I said, can we put something in there to the effect of can be used for capital improvements to any government facility owned by, owned and operated by Polk County? And our bond counsel said that is too broad, that under the statutes it's too broad. So you should limit the scope, um, but he encouraged us to give the board flexibility if they wanted to use that borrowing power. So that's why it's in there. It can be struck, but if we use X number of dollars from the eight point two million at two point one percent, we have a reserve, and we get eleven months down the road, and in the next budget cycle, you all decide we want to use this capital project. We want to fund it with this. It gives us more flexibility before it expires. Otherwise, we would have to go off our new bond altogether, our new cost. This does not constitute a formal promissory note. It's a preemptive step to formal borrowing in January two thousand twenty-two. This requires a three-quarters of it. So it requires twelve members, three-quarters of the elected members present or not. The twelve people have to look past this because it's new. And lastly. January eighteenth, this is what will be coming. I thought it was important to kind of wrap it together so you understood the timeline. January eighteenth will be a note similar to what you see here for the refinance. It'll authorize the signing of a promissory note up to eight point two million in new debt with Bremer Bank, which is what the board directed in November. The interest rate will be two point one. Under that, we can borrow in, anywhere from one dollar to eight point two million dollars. In that note, we've been working out the terms. We'll be able to take twelve monthly draws up to the eight point two million. We can draw one time a month, beginning in February first, two thousand twenty-two, and in January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. At that time, the line will be closed, and then that will be our, our debt obligation. So the plan is, if passed, what we will do is Mo will work with my group, and we'll get all the invoices for the month, pay the invoices, and then we'll do a draw based on what goes out that month. And the first payment on the new debt, that will be due in February two thousand twenty-three. Our P M A financial advisor has shaped the payments, uh, so that the payments on the existing debt and the payment on the new debt will be two point four million and will not go higher than that. We can structure our debt that way so that the debt payment stays stable for the. I hope that brought it together. I'm sure there's a lot of questions, but I wanted to try to do something to bring it together and make.
What if we take questions per resolution? I'd be fine with you guys. So the first resolution, sixty-one twenty one. Anyone have questions on that specific resolution? Next one would be, oh, Kim.
Should we vote on these then as we go? Because this one needs a two-thirds, so this will need a roll call.
It's a little different, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so if there's no questions, we'll just go ahead and go right to a vote on it, so then, okay, I'm fine with that. Okay, I'll make, I'll entertain a motion on resolution sixty-one twenty one, resolution to amend the two thousand twenty-two budget to borrow funds for government center update. We'll move. You got a first and a second? Any other discussion about that? Take a roll call vote then.
Okay, so we start today with Steve Wardall.
Yes.
Dan Ruck?
Yes.
Mike Richard?
Yes.
Sharon Kelly?
Yes.
Tim O'Connell?
Yes.
Amy Middleton?
Yes.
Fran Duncanson? Arcan?
Yes.
Bonaprise?
Yes.
Joe Demeling? Olson?
Yes.
Doug Rowdy?
Yes.
Do I have to vote on this one too? I'd say yes. Right, next resolution up would be D, uh, number sixty-four twenty one, resolution to amend the two thousand twenty-one operating and capital budget to allocate tax, deed, sale, profit to the debt. Any, are there any questions on that one?
What's left, uh, in the tax deed?
One hundred thousand.
It's just a hundred, that's all that's left in.
Right, we budgeted a hundred thousand for the treasurer's office each year, and then the resolution is anything beyond that.
Okay, I'll take a motion.
I'll motion to.
Just a second.
Just a second. Okay, does this one require a, uh? We'll need to do a roll call vote again then. Sixty-four twenty one.
Tracy LeBlanc. Ruck?
Yes.
Mike Richard?
Yes.
Sharon Kelly?
O'Connell?
Yes.
Middleton? DeLuque?
Yes.
Dan Duncanson? Arcan?
Yes.
John Bonaprise?
Yes.
Joe Demeling? Brad Olson?
Yes.
Doug Rowdy?
Yes.
Pete Wardall?
Yes.
Yes. Now we're on resolution number F, resolution number sixty-eight twenty one, resolution providing for the issuance, sale, and delivery of a seven million fifty thousand general obligation refunding promissory note, series two thousand twenty-one. Polk County, Wisconsin, establishing the terms, conditions therefore directing its execution and delivery, creating a debt service amount therefore in awarding the sale thereof. Do we have a discussion about that, or we have just, again, is this a two-thirds vote?
This is a simple majority.
Simple majority. Any, uh, is there a first to bring the, uh, yeah, we got a second from Joe. Any discussion on this one? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Carry. Now we're on, now we're on G. Resolution number sixty-nine twenty one, initial resolution authorizing the issuance of not to exceed eight point, uh, two million general obligation promissory note for the county facility projects. We have a motion. Make a motion. We got a second by Joe. Any discussion on this one? Supervisor Olson.
What happens if we pass Supervisor Kelly's resolution later tonight fixing the refund at Justice Center?
There's, there's presently no justice center projects approved. Anything that, that would be spent on still has to be approved by the board. So you all have approved all the capital projects in the two thousand twenty-two budget. Any subsequent projects would have to be a budget amendment. So there has to be a budget amendment approving a project, and then you would have to approve using a loan, you know, any proceeds for that.
Yeah, is that for any dollar amount?
Or anything over twenty thousand dollars that's not budgeted.
Well, you could use that money up to twenty thousand dollars and use it without coming to the board.
No, with a loan, you know, our policy says the administrator can spend more than twenty without board acknowledgement. Unbudgeted loan. Different than my normal spending.
Different than my normal spending.
If it's unbudgeted, yes. Unbudgeted. Don't know that the loan changes that. Don't know. That I can get right.
I appreciate that from legal counsel to finally, Kim, I mean, let's give Joe a, yeah.
Let's help him.
Yeah.
Sounds to me like this lawyer needs more research. This is coming back to us anyway, so that we can take it out there. This is coming back at, at our July meeting on the 18th.
January.
January.
January. The full note will come to you in January.
So that could be taken out there if we have to. Because this just says to start the process.
Right.
So we, we still have another shot to take it out if we have to.
This is not a binding note, this is a formal intent, and then we draw the note for January.
That it could come out there or something.
But would you, I mean, does it matter to Chad or to you guys that if the board wants to remove that language, would you prefer it be done tonight? Or do you want to be doing this in January again?
If, if the board wants to remove it, it doesn't matter to me when it's done.
Could, could there be something about board approval, since we don't know of projects, that instead of, and I'm just going back in history of Dana, when he said he didn't have to pay for the sand?
Pulling up those. Still on it underneath the highway shop.
So I have.
Other clever accounting sometimes.
It'd be nice for the board, I'm not saying you do it.
I, I actually have, if the board wants it, I have language from the bond attorney. I asked the bond attorney that specific question. If the board wanted to make an amendment, the bond attorney's view is, since the board has to approve spending, it's in there, but I said if they want a safeguard piece of language in there, can you create one, and he sent me the safeguard piece of language. Do you want me to pull it up?
Would you share it? It'd be, maybe we can not talk about it later.
Okay.
The language is.
So you would insert after justice center, provided however, no pro, no proceeds of such promissory notes shall be expended on the justice center until approved by a majority vote of the board at a duly constituted meeting of the Board of Supervisors.
That take care of that for you, Supervisor O'Connell? That you wouldn't have to remove it then, or you still?
No.
That doesn't fix it?
Yes, I think it does, I think we can still take it out whenever Brad was asking that too. So that's, I, we still have a shot to take it out, so that's, that would cover it, I think, better.
Any other questions, John, you had?
Under, I think this is the right place to ask this. Yeah, I think you said, Chad, if we didn't spend the 8.2 million, you identified the justice center. And can you give me any kind of clarification as to security at the justice center? I just, and I think most of us feel that our judges and that are very acceptable.
Well, we don't have anything in the capital plan for security justice center right now, but the way it's set up presently, we have two contract security guards, a metal detector, and for lack of a better term, a movie theater ribbon that guides people through it. So.
Think we'd like something more permanent than that?
Sheriff and I had discussions back when I was chief about a fist entryway and all, but it's not presently in the capital budget, but we have discussed that in the past, a better system. But, you know, I discussed, when the bond attorney brought up, you know, if there's any other, I discussed with Mo, then I discussed with Vince. And the justice center, when Mo and I were talking, is, what, 18 years old? Building's 18 years old. It will get to the point where it needs updating or stuff popping up, so if there was excess funds and the board subsequently decided to do it, the justice center, Mo has plenty of projects. So there's some already in the capital plan somehow.
Just feel that, that is one of our first priorities. Yeah, it should be a capital.
So, any other questions, Olson, did you have one? Supervisor Richard.
Three quarters vote. What provides a, this resolution?
That is the legal advice that Bob Toff, your bond attorney, gave us. Said it required a three quarter. I'm assuming it's statute of emphasizing it.
It is state statute.
It's a state statute, Brian.
Correct.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I have Brian Dell on in case there was something I need to learn.
Hey, there's no other further questions, no amendments then? We will, uh.
Oh, did we amend, put that in?
No, no one made a, a motion to amend.
Go ahead.
Make the motion to amend that, that clause, have that clause put in for a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion about that amendment? Uh, Doug?
Go through it again so we can have exactly what we're doing.
Okay.
After the words "justice center" in line 16, the additional words will be added as, provided however, no proceeds of such promissory notes shall be expended on the justice center until approved by a majority vote of the board at a duly constituted meeting of the Board of Supervisors.
Okay, no further discussion on that, all in favor of the amendment?
Roll call.
A roll call on the amendment, okay?
Oh, not, oh, excuse me.
Not possible, it could be, right?
On the amendment, we just need a, we need a roll call. No, it's a simple majority on the amendment, right?
Okay, with just the, okay, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Carry.
We will need roll call on the resolution.
Now we're at 6921. Do a roll call vote on that, Lisa.
Start with Dan Ruck?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Sharon Kelly?
Yes.
Tim O'Connell?
Yes.
Amy Middleton?
Yes.
Jay Luke?
Yeah.
Duncanson? Arkham? John Bonn Price? Joe Demeling?
Yeah.
Brad Olson?
Yes.
Doug Brody?
Yes.
Pete Hornedal?
Yes.
Tracy LaPla?
Yes. We need a hall, do we have a motion going to committee of the hall?
By order.
By order? We got a couple. Yeah.
B. C.
We need to go back.
Yes.
It's a good point of order, Supervisor, can't. Resolution 6521, to ratify labor agreement, WPPA Field Services Association Local 201 for the 2022 through 2024. Maybe, excuse me. Oh, okay, that was Joe, maybe. Uh, we'll just do this by itself, do we have a motion?
Make motion.
Do we have a second?
Okay.
Any discussion on this?
Can Supervisor Arkham explain that a little bit?
Yeah, we'll let Supervisor Arkham do that.
Yeah, that would help.
Anybody else want a copy of the contract?
If anyone, did we change any language items?
We changed language that uh, the 10 hour and 12 hour MOUs that we enacted a year and a half ago are now incorporated into the contract itself from the side letters. Those were incorporated in it, and then we clarified for the grievance process. It was listed under our former sip, formal, former system of personnel committee. We changed it to the Public Safety and Public Works Committee for the grievance process. Those were the two language changes.
And under wages, we increased under the start step one, who and three was it?
Step, uh, start, step one is step two. In 2022 and 2023, they get a 2% increase each annum. And then step three, four, five, six, they get a 3% increase each annum. We did that because when we did wage comparisons, and in talking with the chief deputy, we needed to fix that back in the more senior people to get ahead.
The bargaining unit has, they've approved them.
They have, they're ready to sign, they're ratified.
Is the only union the county is engaged in?
Two, the next one is also. Someone explain the two unions and why, what, what we're doing, maybe that would help anyone that doesn't sit through this process?
So we have the, we have the WPPA Field Services, who are the line deputies. The sergeants have their own union, but other than wage, they tail on the field services. They have to be in a separate union house because they're supervisors. So, and so the sergeants, their contract mirrors the field services contract. The only difference is, there's a slight difference in, uh, there's a language change in it, I'll go over about their promotion, and then their wage, they negotiate a little separately, but otherwise, language mirrors.
The general government does this every two years, and it's in closed session, and it takes multiple meetings to get through this. Got, John?
The reason why I ask that, Chris, remember when I came back from that one state of conference? The, uh, the court in the state of Wisconsin rules that the investigators are not eligible to be part of this union. And, uh, that was kind of disrespect that the union. Court rules that somehow they aren't susceptible to the same amount of danger as the deputies. Where do our investigators stand on that?
Uh, that was, I think what, Mr. Bonn Price, I think what you're talking about are the corrections officers. The investigators fall within it. Our jailer correction officers are separate.
Yes.
Right, they, they've been separate since Act 10 passed. Um, but no, our investigators fall within this, it's our corrections officers. They don't fall within this, as well as our dispatch personnel and our administrative support staff.
Supervisor Arkham, you just went through our committee?
No. You're down a must, but it did go through.
Um, Supervisor O'Connell?
What's the term of this, how many years? Is it every two? It's every two.
2022, 2023, and then we'll renegotiate. The 2023.
Supervisor Olson, you had a question?
Yeah, so I think we should pay them more, I'm not saying that we should, you know, change it tonight. I, I just think the men and women that, that put that badge on every day and, and go out and protect us, they're invaluable. They put their life on the line every day to, to arrest criminals in, in this county. And I'll just, I don't even know what they're making, don't care, I'd pay them a little bit more, not, you know, that the sky is the limit or anything. They're the ones who arrest the criminals, unlike the other side that turns around, lets them back out on the street again before the cop can probably get his paperwork done.
Might that be the other side?
Just wondering, what, he lasts 50 years and he won?
Supervisor Arkham?
Yeah, now, in negotiations, uh, it's all done with comparables. Public sector negotiating, there's, it's comparables and it's mediation arbitration. So our job is to make sure that we at least meet, and not that we don't have to exceed, but we have to meet the comparables. And we are at the top of the comparable. So it's not like we're, like we went cheap on our deputies or field services. We're at the top.
And one thing I'll share, and I was going to do it under, um, administrator, the chair's deal at the end. But I have talked with all the directors in the county, talked to the sheriff, talked to Vince, and to Chad, because I was that lone vote, um, that didn't vote on it, it wasn't because I didn't, I just felt like that too. And, um, one of the things that, we have a resolution coming to general government next month, and it's going to be a resolution on performance-based pay. I think we're going to have a whole nother discussion as counties are starting to look at this overall. On how do we reward the stars of the county, how do you bring these people up, how do you keep them, retain them? Because it's so hard to get private sector to move into the county positions now. So I think to address that, because that was my concern too. So I think next month, we're going to have an opportunity to talk about that again. John?
That was, I agree with Supervisor Olson, that, that was my continuing beef with Dana, is he was forever advertising for jailers. And at, at that time, I remember it was 18 something an hour. And I thought, you're never going to get people to accept that responsibility for, for that kind of money. And I think the, the reason why I had that other question is because the jailers are not eligible for that, that union part. They're singled out on that. And they, everybody around the state said.
Point of order. We stated the motion on the floor.
Just have to point across, thank you, John. Um, is there any other discussion, what, we're on resolution 6521. We had a motion and a second, any other discuss, discussion? Voting in to approve 6521, I hope by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Carry. Resolution number 6721, resolution to ratify labor agreement with WPPA Field Service Sergeants Association for the 2022 through 24 budget. Have a motion?
Follow.
Section, second. Any other discussion? Assuming it's the same Supervisor Olson?
Yeah.
One, uh, there's one clarification on, or the, as I mentioned, there's two differences in the sergeants. The sergeants under the old union contract had the right to revert to, back to deputy, whether they chose to or the sheriff chose. For them to go back down in nine months, they keep their seniority. Under the new contract, they can choose at any point, being a sergeant, they could be five years into it, go back and keep their seniority. The other thing is typically the sergeants get 10% above whatever the deputy's pay scale is. But in this contract, because we were also trying to get our sergeants, uh, up there, against the comparisons near the top, the sergeants are 10% above the deputies, but in 2022 and 2023, the sergeants also have a separate 2% and 3% adjustment along the same steps. And the intent of that is to make them comparable with sergeants elsewhere. Those are the only differences in that.
Basically, we're trying to give them a little more long-term, right? That's the one where we're.
Retain our supervisors and the talent.
Right. All right, any other discussion? All approve 6721 by saying aye?
Aye.
Carry. Resolution 66-21, resolution to accept the ownership of the clam falls dam. Have a motion, ref, second? Olson? Uh, maybe we should have a discussion by our chair to give them an update on what we've done with that resolution and how it got here. General government, Arkham? Or you want to do it then?
Sure, I put together a couple of slides. Please don't let me. This may help in the conversation, just as a little recap. Uh, reslin, resolution 4921, uh, approved, uh, that we continue with the transfer of the dam if certain prerequisites are met. Those prerequisites, if you, if you recall, was we wanted skin in the game from Clam Falls. That resulted in an MOU with the town, uh, responsible for approximately $20,000 per year. That was to pay for insurance, and then certain maintenance items, and if we go into the escrow account, we could, uh, use as appropriate. Uh, as of today, the escrow account has $573,511. That will be transferred to the county upon, uh, the transfer of, of the dam and the land. Uh, the state is to fund up to 2 million for repair, and that, as you call, recall, was authorized the governor's budget. So, uh, it will, as we repair the dam, they will reimburse us the two million dollars. And then, of course, we had to be able to get liability insurance, we've determined that is obtainable. Uh, and we have options on that to, uh, provide liability. Now, where we are today, a quick, quick claim deed has been prepared for three property, properties on Clam Falls Lake, I call it. I don't know if that's the right language, I guess. And I have a picture of that on your desk. So Northwest Electric, they have the dam property, but they also had a couple of other properties. Because they haven't been paying property taxes on that, that was in a trust file, or a trust that said, you know, it's part of the dam, uh, property. All those properties would be transferred to us. Um, and so you can see where the three properties are. Uh, we think that not only is the dam property important, but then those others, you see there are some interesting potential, uh, because of their location on the lake and next to the town of Clam Falls. Um, in addition, once the transfer is completed, we are prepared to apply for a DNR matching grant. Last year, we said that that matching grant is up to four hundred thousand dollars. The state has put in additional fund, funds for dams. And now that DNR matching grant is, is, goes up to a potential one million dollars. No guarantee we get those, but we are prepared to apply for them, we've been in communication with DNR. Estimated repair costs, I emphasize estimated, is anywhere from one point nine million to two point one million dollars. Could, could be higher, could be lower, but that's a reasonable guess at this point based on estimates that we've received. Uh, and we've bumped it up a little bit for inflation. Uh, however, we are ready to send out RFPs. Those RFPs obviously will give us the opportunity to say, here are the requirements that we expect. We want the lowest feasible way that we can, uh, accomplish a good rating from the DNR. That's just the background on the dam. The resolution for you is, as, as we had discussed before, if we met the criteria and we've made the arrangements with, uh, Northwest Electric, we can transfer ownership as early as tomorrow. In fact, we have to do it soon. Uh, DNR has approved the transfer. Once we, uh, file it with the deed, get it signed, file it with the deed's office, then we will, uh, contact the DNR and let them know. So, you know, too, we work closely with the DNR, we are meeting with them January sixth, for example, to do a tour of the dam and a, uh, kind of a punch list, so to speak, as to what they recommend, how we do things and, and.
Could you, can you explain to the public, I mean, we all got this map, but if anyone from the public is looking, can you explain the parcels and the sizes of them and what the county's actually getting? How many acres?
Yeah. Can I look at this?
You bought twenty.
Yeah, and, and the acreage is not exact in some cases, but it, it, we, we tried to do it as closely as we can. The, uh, one at the top of the picture, the odd shaped one there is, is really kind of where the dam is and, and down below it. Bob, you can correct me if I'm, if I say anything incorrect. Uh, the other two parcels, uh, are there. The interesting one is the larger one down below is the nine point seven five acres. Right there on the Clam Flo- uh, Clam Falls flowage, there's no clear access to that deed property, but actually, we think there is. Correct, Bob, that, uh, there is kind of a-
There is an easement?
An easement. Okay, and so that is next to a campground. Um, so, you know, you, you think about the potential of that product. Uh, it could be something we sell. Be valued, lay front property. It could be something that we develop ourselves into a park or some type of useful, uh, land for, for the public to use as well. Uh, the three point nine six, that, you know, I, I don't know as much about that one other than it's, it's included in this, uh, in the deed.
Are there questions?
Uh, on the nine point seven five, where's the easement? Do you know, do we know that, Bob?
Yes, are there?
Go ahead and walk up, Bob, and point to it.
Somewhere on a, on a deed that we're taking over?
Yeah, um, the southern lot.
Better move it. Let me drive.
Um, we spent quite a bit of time doing some title and deed work on these properties. They hadn't been done in quite some time. And we discovered that there is an easement over here. It's owned by a dead guy. There is an easement. This property here, we, this one, over time, um, people, the current owner sold off portions of that parcel. The deed and title search. We learned that actually, this is what the acreage of this lot is right now, seven point four nine acres. Once we give an easement for this property owner and this property owner, we think this is gonna be around six acres. This winter, Steve Geiger, our county surveyor, will be out there with a little bit more credit. It's in the acreage, but right now we believe that's roughly six acres.
Amy, uh, you, that was your question. Um, Mike?
Uh, there is the provision whereas, or the resolved, well, the county is able to satisfy the insurance coverage. I, uh, have concerns about potential liability, but, uh, Director Chad had, uh, presented the general government committee a little background on the coverage that is available. I think it's important that that be, uh, presented to the, to the board for its consideration.
Okay, we do have a couple of options. One is a, uh, liability of two million dollars, which would cost us a little over fifteen thousand dollars a year. Uh, we could add an additional four million to that liability coverage to make it six million. That would cost us twenty-nine thousand. The other thing is, this is the liability insurance that is offered by the insurance company in its current condition, the dam's current condition. And, and I, you know, I, my expectation would be that as we repair it, that the rates would come down.
So policy is that you guys make that decision, that's not a board decision? I, I think Supervisor Richard, are you okay with that explanation?
Well, uh, it's, it said the county is able to secure satisfactory insurance coverage, satisfactory insurance coverage.
Your question is, who, who makes it satisfactory? Who makes that decision? Was that you, Vince?
Well, I can make a proposal, but certainly the board has the final say. If, if you would prefer the six million liability coverage or the two million.
Oh, is two million satisfactory? I mean, you guys don't ever ask us those questions in the past. Seems like a new question you'd ask the board, weigh in on.
Yeah.
Corporation council, is there, is there standing, or is there a policy that says this is satisfactory?
There's no policy that says that two million's gonna be enough for what the risk is. What we would likely do, uh, and if, uh, the administrator wanted to bring it to the board for the board's consideration, is, uh, when we acquire the insurance policy, if we suddenly, for some reason, think that we need more, if we think that, uh, there's potential, um, large risk somewhere down river, uh, that increases, like if they go and build a big residential area right underneath the dam, we may want to consider having more insurance because if something happens, then we need more insurance. But there's no specific policy that would set what that is other than doing a simple risk assessment and making that. And then ultimately, if we, the administrator wants to bring it to the board and, and board's advice on, on what they want, what you want to do, then-
Hey?
Well, I think that this is something that we have the option of getting it. And I think that's Mike's concern. Thirdly, uh, as to the amount, we don't, we don't really know what the exposure is yet. There's been no estimate in my mind that I found. An estimate of our exposure. Had some experience with dams going out, uh, in emergency situations. And when Woodley Dam went out years ago, big rush to, uh, protect the downriver properties. And the water raised two inches that, that was forty-six. And so we don't have an estimate without, without spending that kind of difference in money. Two million versus six million. I think that's something we've gone within determine, just, I mean, as far as the resolution goes, I think we, we're satisfied that we can get insurance. And if we can't, that would be another story, but apparently we can't get it. So, I think that's probably something that we-
Uh, Brad?
Yeah, I had a question, um, the MOU.
Term?
Is it open-ended, is it indefinite, is it after so many years?
Yes, um, yeah, I know Malia and Brad worked on that. Brad probably could answer that better, but I know that, I think it's after five years, it gets, it continues unless there's some reason to change it.
It's a twenty-year term. The initial term is twenty years. After the twenty-year initial term, there's a five-year, uh, recurring renewal. So the turn, the, the ultimate term of the MOU is indefinite. There is no end to that, uh, agreement. But the way that it is drafted, it has an initial term of twenty years that automatically renews. Um, my recollection, and if I had a copy of it, I could. My recollection is that, um, both parties have to agree to terminate, but give me one moment. Yeah, both parties have to agree to a termination. So if, for example, uh, the town of Clam Falls decided, hey, we're not gonna renew, they would run into some legal problems with the county. Um, we would be able to try to, uh, force them to renew, um, through specific performance on the contract. Or, uh, they would have some kind of liquidated damages, but most likely would be specific performance. So the term renews unless both the county and the town agree that it doesn't. So it's twenty years, and then every five years it renews. So basically, every five years, the town and the county have the opportunity to cancel it.
After twenty.
After twenty, so the first twenty is locked in.
Well, I'm a warrior.
Brad?
Yeah, and, and it, and it is, and it is lined up to be indefinite. Unless the dam is removed or the county sells the property.
Supervisor, uh, Kelly?
Is there, is there anything in you? We don't mention the two million from the state, does that have to be mentioned in here? Although we know it's in the state budget. Should it be mentioned in here?
You know, I don't know that it has to be mentioned because, you know, if we're gonna be using it, obviously.
Okay, then on line fourteen, this is just the man, I checked the paper. Um, it has a matching grant of a billion dollars, could which be used? It should say which could be used, right?
It is a scribbler's area, yeah, that those two words should be-
Yeah, switch around.
Supervisor Kelly, or Supervisor Duncanson?
Wow.
Okay. Um, so I, I just really have one more. Any statutory requirement that counties, I know that I don't mean to spell these, but for counties, I just require a requirement in the property that it has to-
We acquire property because it's not a gift, so we're not receiving it, we're acquiring it. Believe that it's simple majority to acquire the property.
So?
Performed by that.
Yeah, are we paying anything? We're not paying anything for it, but we are expecting ownership of it. Wouldn't mine just check it?
Supervisor O'Connell?
Insurance, are, has that dam ever breached? Well, the dam's never breached in how many years?
Yeah, so, uh, when-
Hundred plus years it's been there, it hasn't breached.
So I looked at the insurance, when we, I, I, we got a copy of the insurance from the power company.
Can I, can I, right there, what, what kind of liability policy do they carry?
Two million.
They carried two million?
Right.
Okay.
And we carried ten million. It's possible that our carrier will adopt the dam once the work is done. At this time, they won't, so we have to carry the policy.
That's separate policy, yes, sir. It's never been breached up to now.
And when I talk to the DNR, we ask that question, in fact, five years to have it repaired comes up in twenty-twenty-two. So, and they said, no, you're not to that point where the, you know, you can extend that.
Previously, we have accepted property before, I know we have without.
As in, every year we've had just some kind of property that, yeah, as I remember.
Over the question? Oh, we got a question that Supervisor Duncanson asked, and we're waiting for.
Again, I'm not aware of any statutory requirement that would have us have to have a two-thirds vote to, uh, accept or acquire. Uh, and depending on how you frame what we're doing, I, I still don't believe that it requires anything more authority. If you have a particular statute that you think does require that, I'd be more than happy to take a quick glance at it. But again, I don't believe that there is that requirement.
Received the all-grant property, we didn't have to.
Right, and I think too, when we passed the original resolution with Malia, and then we, and she wrote this resolution to take ownership, I'm can't speak for her, I'm a hundred percent confident she-
Never thought, let's take a roll call vote and see if it's so. It won't make any difference.
It actually says right on the thing, vote requires a majority vote for them. Right on board action, Bob, no. Vote, so.
Other question?
Off a roll call.
Okay, roll call vote. We've got a, we've got a, so we got our first, we got our second, it's a roll call vote.
Mike Richard?
Who?
Karen Kelly?
Yes.
Tom O'Connell?
Yes.
Middleton?
Yes.
Grant Duncanson? Russ Arcan?
Yes.
Don Bonapace?
Yes.
Demeling?
No.
Ted Olson?
Yes.
Doug Roddy?
Yes.
Orno?
Yes.
LeBlanc?
No.
Ken Rock?
Yes.
I think that we have nine yeses.
And I'll be on record by saying yes.
Yeses and five no's.
It passes. Thank you, board, I think this is a big step for our county to do something like this. And, uh, I appreciate everyone's hard work all these years to get this thing pushed through, and our state, and our governor to support the project. Uh, it's a big deal. And I, and I thank our legislators for getting that two million dollars. If it wasn't for me and Rob, um, that money wouldn't be there. I want to personally thank them too for doing their job. And the governor, thank you Governor Evers. And I actually thanked him at the Amory egg tourism. I personally thank the governor, and he was completely behind this project down in Amory. Uh, John?
I toured that, all that property pretty good yesterday and I have before. And I just want to urge the people that really look into what we're acquiring there. I think you're gonna be very, very appreciative. I think you're going to be very, very appreciative of the situation it's in now and I don't think anybody would want it. You go back to the Woodley Dam. Where we're going to take it.
Thank you. All right. So now are we on to committee of hold? We have a motion going to committee of hold? We will be taking a break at just prior to closed session for handout and update. So right before this closed session, we could take a small break. Everyone's good to keep going. Doug, you got a.
Roger, you were asking for.
Yep.
Actually, going to committee of hold.
Yeah, so Roddy and Olson all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Vince, is this you?
Yeah, I'll start it off. All right. It's to discuss resolution number fifty seven. I'm sorry. Yeah, fifty seven twenty one from Mrs. Kelly. And I prepared just kind of a summary again to bring you up to date to kind of frame this. If you recall, the first batch of funds we received was approximately four point two five million. Since that time, we've committed one point six two million to the recycling center. That leaves us with approximately two point six three million dollars left with this round of funding. In Ms. Kelly's resolution, it includes replacing the microwave radio, a new radio tower, if you recall, in the Davis Falls St. Croft St. Croix Paul's area where there's some dead spaces. And then also includes the museum tower, replacing it, and it includes the justice center roof. Those four items do add up to the two point six three million. So it's and I don't I'll let Ms. Kelly explain that, but I will show on the next page. As a result of conversations in each of the committees, these are the things that have come up and were discussed and either voted on or came to consensus. So therefore, we can discuss them today in this meeting. In Public Safety, Public Works, they voted to make an amendment. They just said, hey, we would like an amendment to Ms. Kelly's resolution to remove the museum tower and the justice center roof and replace it with the command center. And that command center is what Don and Tanya have investigated and came up with a cost and I I know it's just an estimate of about five hundred and sixty thousand dollars to meet the needs for what they use will use it for. Health and Human Services had a consensus to prioritize, as they put it, the command center, same one. And then Environmental Services came to a consensus to recommend the LiDAR software that Bob has been talking about, and that cost is a hundred and thirty two thousand dollars. Thing I'll make as we get into the discussion on on the on the resolution, the other sidebar is that the LiDAR and the radio equipment are time sensitive in terms of pricing. The LiDAR and the radio system will save us on each one about a hundred and forty thousand dollars each if we were to buy them this year as opposed to next year. So with that, maybe Sharon would like to discuss the resolution. Or whatever you need to be.
Yeah.
Well, I think most between Environmental Services and Health and Human Services, we've discussed it at length in both those committees. And I think everyone's in agreement that the command center is something that needs to be replaced at some point in time. The command center today is a functioning, it's functioning, it's still working. I don't know if it isn't, it wasn't in our longer term plan anywhere yet to have that replaced, but it's twenty years old. It should be replaced at some point.
And it was used.
And what?
And it was used when we got it through FEMA.
Okay. That at the same point, the the command center for the next round of ARPA funds, it would be fall into something that we could use ARPA funds for even if they weren't put into the general fund because there's no guarantee we're going to be able to put that next four point two million in the into the general fund like we did with this first first payout. The other thing is the justice center roof is on the capital improvement plan for twenty twenty five. We could leave it there, you know, we could still leave it there or I'd like to I want my whole point of this was we have so many things on our capital improvement plan. How are we ever going to get them picked off the list? This I saw it as an opportunity for us to be able to take some of those things off the list. The museum tower, the museum building is on the National Historic Register of Buildings. We're obligated as a county to keep that thing in decent shape. That tower's in bad shape and the hundred and fifty thousand just is doing structural. It's just making it safe. It's not safe today. It's not putting windows back in it. It's not bringing it up to the way it used to look like or anything. All it is is keeping it from falling down and allowing people to be able to access that that tower area safely because it's used, it's subparts that are used for storage now. The LiDAR software, I agree with the LiDAR software. We not came to light, it wasn't on our radar, except the Penna Lake radar. We we didn't know about that until this last few weeks when when we started hearing about it because the the LiDAR and the radio equipment, I you know, they're time sensitive. I think that I'm in favor of being able to get those things done and not have to pay a lot of money to do it later. So I don't know if if the right thing to do is remove some things and replace them with LiDAR and the command center now or, you know, I don't know if there's a right or wrong in this. I do think we need to get another command center. I'm talking with Don and Tanya and there's Don. I got his name right this day. I always call him Dan. So I I just don't, you know, I don't know. There isn't a right or wrong in it, I think. And I'm not like, I don't have my heels dug in saying, this is what we need to do. I'm I'm I think this was a way to generate the discussion so that we can make a a good decision on what we want to do going forward.
Can I ask a question about the structural integrity? You're in charge of property, right?
Yes.
What is, I mean, just after watching the tornado go through and tear that one museum or that courthouse top of their building up, I was thinking about our museum here. What what is wrong with it structurally? What what is the scope of work there and how did how did how bad is it or can you identify this this repair work?
Sure, it's the um the bell the bell tower itself, there's open area up on top that weather can get into the subsequent floor and that is considered a roof. That that roof is leaking currently, it's causing the wood to be funkiness. The stairwell going up there, wood is rotten, needs to be replaced. With that, the brick tucking point, the mortar between the bricks needs to be replaced and updated. And that was assessed by LHP in a conditions assessment on there. With that, so is the tower going to fall down? No. But these are things that need to be replaced and repaired in the near future. Get phased in on a couple of different areas or done in with one project.
My other my other question would be this command center, is there specs? Have someone developed exactly and has it gone through? Like, do we know exactly what the command center is? Would that be done? Can you share us what's wrong with the existing command center and what what the need is so we all understand?
Just a quick few slides?
I think so.
I just have a quick PowerPoint on the command poster, right? So first of all, some things are wrong with it. It's eighteen years old. We did buy lightly used. It was a outfitted command post that we got through FEMA grant funds. Typical lifespan on an RV is about twenty years. It is an RV chassis. You know, the first, you know, seventeen years of it, it pretty much sat in our garage. We used it for special events. Now that COVID's here, we've been using it quite a bit out there doing the testing and ex nation. The generator needs to be replaced. Just a bunch of things there are starting to get real wore out with it from the daily use. I mean, RVs are that way. Here's just a list of some of the things. We've done a lot of repairs over the last year in that on it to keep it functioning, but eventually thing is that they get. We went to LDB. It's down in Burlington. They specialize in making command post vehicles. They basically get a chassis with an engine and frame and tires and they build the whole thing up there on their facility. They have wood shop, fabric shop, everything. Our current bid price right now, we got in on Friday, was one seventy five hundred and seventy one thousand. This is for the complete man post that we have come up with the design with public health. This is what the kind of exterior of it looks like. Exterior on the backside, there's an office. There's going to be a doorway. Here's public health, people come and come and walk through for a type of clinic so they can come in the back door and out the side door and shuttle them through that way. On the exterior, you have your camera mask, your radio mask. Outside, there's a station for for emergency management. In the front of the area, there's a big meeting room up in front where we can house and do our command center. In the back, where we're doing the public health clinic stuff, there's three workstations we'll have set up for dispatch center. So when we if we need to move it to for a dispatch center, we have that capability. Specs on it real quick. Here's our design of it. There's an overlay of the vehicle. It's got one slide out here. The door here for entry that people can go in. Here's that back door and then there's the side door. So we do have a good floor plan. Went down there, we viewed the factory, went through it, picked out the specs we need for the vehicle, or, you know, met with public health and that's their need and that's where we're at today. Our bitching came in, five hundred and seventy one thousand. We'll pick it up ourselves. We don't need delivery charge, so it's five seventy eight. That's the cost for that floor plan. They don't expect the cost to go up too much in twenty twenty two. They have a lot of the materials on hand for them, the manufacturer. It's a local Wisconsin company, custom fire that makes commands or fire vehicles. They backed out, they don't even want to give us. That's where we're at on the command board.
So is this way more what you're looking for in a command post than what you have today?
Yes. So this is an all aluminum body and they, a lot of companies or counties will bring the vehicle back and have them do retrofits for it. They can easily retrofit things, redo it, just simply out there aluminum body. Pretty impressive company.
What I like about it is it's not a truck chassis right off the start, you know, so I don't, I think it'll have a little more than a twenty year life, especially with all aluminum body.
They say that twenty years, you cannot bring it back, upgrade it and get it on it.
We're doing with the old one.
The old one, after we take our equipment out, we probably was auctioned off in Wisconsin.
Any value?
Value of it, I don't know. Like I said, it's an RV chassis that so there is some value to it, how much.
I talked about that at a Wisconsin county's conference. Boy, there was some of these counties were really impressed. They'll go into Wisconsin surplus auction. I think we're going to get really good money for.
We've been selling our squad cars down there and we've been doing.
I saw a lot of excited people.
We're in the committee of the whole. Are we done asking questions, Doug?
I'd like to say something and I I'm not going to ask about that. On line thirty two, we talk about capital improvements of the whole country. And that was done on a resolution all alone. And I think what we've done here is we've bundled a bunch of things together and towers are time sensitive and we can save two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So my amendment would be to split off A and B.
You can do that amendment when we go back into open.
Yeah, I know, but I just trying to explain it to the supervisors in that there seems to be discussion on the command center and the museum and the justice center, but no one's really discussing the towers in that we need them. So I think they need to be separated so we don't get into a discussion on this side and move this.
You're saying you'd like to you'd like to see them go one at a time.
Either one or A and B.
So one, two, three, four, and vote up or down on them.
Best way to do it because then if there gets to be a long discussion on those three items that we're trying to get, then let's just get A and B done. That's the towers.
Okay.
I I'm trying to agree with him because I think should be separate. It should be a maintenance item and so should the roof at the museum. It shouldn't even come out of this right here. It should be a maintenance thing and it should be on the CPI list for this coming year. We can find a way to finance it possibly with the second one or we do have money to pay for that. So I think maintenance items should really be in this one. So I'm thinking the two towers.
The recycling center is a maintenance issue. You voted for that a couple of months ago.
Well, so we did one thing wrong. Let's do it right.
Right. Just saying.
Yeah.
Olson?
So my understanding is, I mean, the justice center roof was is currently leaking.
Has leaked in the past. Currently, we have it fixed. Here, as the leaks come, we repair them. It is due for replacement.
It just it just seems like four years down the road to twenty twenty five, we're going to have a lot of money tied up into patches on on top of the roof. I mean, I and it isn't that I'm against the command center, but I was just told it sat in the shed for seventeen years. Let's just say the next one doesn't sit in the shed for seventeen.
It was always used at the fair and different.
It's kind of like sitting in the shed.
The roof is leaking at the museum.
Yeah, and and there again, I'm 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 just saying it's priorities of roof is leaking at the museum, if the roof is leaking at the justice center, there's a roof that's leaking, a higher priority than something that we have and can push off for six, six or eight months. I don't know, just my thoughts.
Was the chance of getting us getting this ARPA money, any more updates?
So when I did the estimate to recover the twenty twenty, I used the calculator, did estimates for twenty one and twenty two. Presently, using the estimates, it looks like we'll be able to recover it as as lost revenue, but I want to disclaim that with, I don't have any of your numbers, so I can't tell you solidly that we'll be able to claim it all. That won't be able to tell you, that's all we have.
What's that? What are you here though? Are we going to get another batch of money?
We get four point two three million in May and about June, I'll know if we can recover that as lost revenue.
All right, John?
And in your conversation chat, you seem to indicate you thought we could get the command center approved in there.
Well, I I think based on, if you look at the guidance and you look how we've used the command center and the purpose for it, we could justify it under the COVID response, emergency response guidance, even if we don't get lost revenue.
We didn't know that when that came through our Health and Services.
You want, you have a question?
Well, I'm interested in this LiDAR software and and how we can get that folded in. I'm not sure how the math all adds up on all this, but I feel like that's a tiny little amount of money to have the matching grant. Be great to just give them.
That's a huge thing to have.
It's a pretty awesome piece of software.
For that would be one forty, five hundred. For that would be one forty, five hundred. It's what it's up to. That would be.
One thirty-two.
I know, but I'm still thinking.
Majority.
The majority voted. They thought it was too much in their privacy. They're gonna lose. It doesn't have any, anyway, so it doesn't matter. But this does, does our, you know, it does, uh, that, it does the culverts. It'll set our high watermarks on everything. It's, it's gonna save a lot of, a lot of things. That's why I think we should go down the list like Doug said, when we get in.
Right, so Olson?
Yeah, just a question. I mean, so the, the command center is, even if we can't, Chad, even if we can't stick the next four point two million into general fund, the command center would be available for use in that money.
Based on the guidance, I'd be comfortable submitting.
What about, uh, maintenance on roofs and buildings?
No, uh, unless it's lost revenue, we wouldn't be able to.
Sure.
Just one more roof question, Mr. Chair. So is it, um, so this building, we're looking at three hundred days. They're telling us on a roof. Is it really any different on the justice center? I mean, is it the same kind of roof, different material? You know, I mean, are, are we out three hundred days there? I mean, if, if we do nothing now, and we wait a year, and then we're three hundred days out, we're two years out before we get that roof fixed instead of, because today, realistically, we're a year out if it's the same material as what's here.
It's a different style of roof. It's a balanced roof, which requires more insulation to be added to it, bring it to code. Um, and that's where our lead time is currently now is with the insulation. The building over there is, is asphalt would be, um, replace the rubber membrane. Get different roofs.
Well, that's enough already.
Can I have a question? At one time, there was discussion by the board about using some of the ARPA funds because they're in the general fund, or you've got it kind of tucked away that they could be used for infrastructure here on this project too, right?
It could.
Okay.
It could.
Do you know how many dollars could be used towards the eight million?
Uh, all of it.
Oh, okay.
All of the initial money could be used for anything other than offsetting taxes to the tax. As long as government legally can do it.
Sure.
So.
That just clears it all up for you.
That.
Amy? Go ahead, Kim.
I have, I have a question on the, so watching the pandemic stuff, do we need to keep a rainy day fund? I mean, I feel like we should not blow everything so that all of a sudden we have a home response of the ARPA money.
Chad, can you explain what are, how long we can hang on to it without blowing it?
We have to have this money.
I understand that, but if we spend it, I'm just saying should be keeping a little pot somewhere for our public health rainy day fund.
Roughly right now, we have, I think, I think it's like eighteen months of funding for COVID response is what Tanya's group is estimating it at, if I recall. Well, that's money we actually have for, you know, for the response. So we can fund our present COVID response for, I think it's eighteen months as things stand with non-ARPA money.
But the question is really, though, I think the clear is the ARPA money that went into the general fund, we still have to spend that by a certain date.
We have to commit it by twenty twenty-four, spend it by twenty-six.
Yeah.
Need a lot to change in there, like needed for.
Right.
That's what we have our general fund for.
We can go to that.
And we had it, we've had it a couple of years ago where we had the, the placement issue, and I remember Dana, we had a six hundred thousand, nine hundred thousand dollar general fund being in one year, we had to pay for. That wasn't expected.
Or we had the storm in twenty nineteen. That cost us a billion upfront, and we got it back.
But did we, and we upped our general fund to forty percent. Did we do that yet or not?
That's what's pending in those.
That's pending in the policy. So that was your presentation in that special meeting, that we're gonna have forty percent instead of twenty percent. Which will put us up to what?
Uh.
Thirteen million.
Thirteen million, yeah.
About thirteen million, and then we still have three million left in there, because there's seventeen now. So we do have that extra three million, but he has to take this money, and we have to spend.
Right.
And I think that second half, so that could go towards this building too. You know, towards that, we don't have to borrow eight million if, if there's two million in that ARPA money. Could go into the building.
So the one thing I hear consensus is, is that everyone seems like they'd like to be broke down just, instead of lumping them all together. Does it sound like there's consensus that we're gonna vote on each item by himself standing? Right?
I would just ask Corporation Council, if we have this resolution from Sharon, can we all of a sudden dismantle it and build on each thing separately? You can't vote on each, can't vote to pass the resolution piecemeal. We'll have to basically address adding or removing items that aren't already in here as amendments. Vote on whether or not you're going to add it to the resolution and then pass or not pass the resolution. The only way to kind of piecemeal it in a different way would be to have single resolutions that are proposed at a different session, not tonight, that get brought, and each one is its own resolution. To, to do it tonight, you can, again, you can make the motion to amend, add LiDAR. Everyone votes on it, whether it gets added or not. Then, okay, it gets added. Great. Motion to add the command center. It doesn't get added. All right. Now, when we're all done with our amendments, now we vote on whether this one resolution passes or not. We're not gonna be able to vote on, yes, we're gonna allocate money here. No, we're not gonna allocate money here. Yes, we're gonna. The only way to do that is through your amendments. You, you can't
Sure, we get it.
Create new resolutions basically right now.
But we can, we can, when we go back into open session, though, we can make amendments, or we can make, we can. Let me ask this, Joe. Can the board, we go back in, because it says that, um, motion to act consider, committee of the whole has noticed on the agenda, so we could, in the committee of the whole, we could make recommendations that the list of items, we could pick list of items tonight, right?
Sure.
How do we, or we could do it in committee of the whole. We could give Vince, here's all the five or six projects that we want to vote on next month. Standalone. Right? So we got.
I am sensitive.
You could choose items to send back to committee to basically consider and then have that come back.
Sure.
But, but some are time sensitive, time sensitive, like LiDAR and the towers.
But you're not gonna get to pass them tonight anyways, because there's no resolutions.
If you elect to keep your resolution intact.
And, and tag to go take on or take, take them out or take.
Leave them on the resolution, take everything else off and pass the resolution. We'll, we'll activate our time sensitive problem.
Okay, right, so you, you guys, all your questions are answered, right? You're ready to move out of closed session, John?
Mr. Chair just went, so there is, there is a formal amendment on the floor already for public safety through general government to the floor to amend Sharon Kelly's resolution to approve A and B, the radio tower and the microwave system, remove C and D.
There's a resolution on this?
There, there's an amendment to this resolution.
Through the.
Through, through public safety and general government to the board. And then to replace C and D with the command center is what came out of public. So there is a standing amendment.
Can we not amend our amendments so that, and this is possible, we amend our amendment to include the towers and eliminate from our amended amendment the, uh, command station and then pass the resolution?
Item.
It was just a minute. We're gonna, let them just talk.
And they propose an amendment to strike C and D.
Yes.
All right, John?
Can we simply turn down the resolution and then start over like Kim and Brad said?
Not tonight.
Yeah, tonight, we got, we're time sensitive, the towers.
We gotta move on to tonight.
By the first. No, but, no, you didn't get to the point. Can't we simply turn down the resolution and then just start, oh?
Can't do a new resolution.
We can't make one.
Can we do by, uh, we gotta add.
We can take them all, leave the two towers in, add LiDAR. And start getting them on.
And take roofs out.
Yeah. And take the roofs off. Yeah, that's C and D. The roofs are out.
Well, that's complicated.
No, that's the question is.
That's. I'll go along with that.
That's a question.
Which one?
Move C and D and add LiDAR basically like the same.
We could vote down the first amendment and then change it. That was my proposal. We could, we could, a standing amendment can be voted down.
Yeah.
Okay, then we come back to an amendment. C and D is out. Two towers, LiDAR in. Rest of these come back at the January.
That would change.
Separate.
Corporation Council said that'd be the easiest way.
It's the easiest, is it not?
They have to go through a committee first.
The other ones can come back as a resolution to go, well, they have to go through general government. They should anyway.
Yeah, the resolution has to go through general government.
The new ones, of each one separate, yes. They know where the funding.
You got a question about this?
Well, I don't, as a following, I've got back into talking about the command center and that. Just, can't we just eliminate C and D and vote on E and D, and we can discuss all this again next month, or we could have a resolution ready, then we're going to.
What we're gonna do. All we're doing is.
Time sensitive and two hundred and eighty thousand dollars we'd save.
Yep, and we're doing the LiDAR, and so we're gonna get rid of C and D.
Problem we got, that is the amendment from public.
I think I got it.
So Doug, let's go back. Jay's got a, a comment about that comment. Jay?
We got a problem with the amendment that's attached on public protection, uh, adding the.
We just voted down that.
We just voted down. That amendment down, we could just start over with the clean, it's, then we can clean it up. We vote the first amendment down, just vote no.
I, I got you.
And then we start with the new amendment, leave the two, take C and D off, add LiDAR.
Going down the amendment.
Yes, Supervisor Arkhan?
I don't think any committee has made any amendments to this resolution unless they do it at this meeting. They can talk about anything they want, what they want to do at this meeting, but Public Safety made no amendments to that resolution. They might have talked about an amendment, but they didn't make one. They don't, they can't change it at committee. A resolution only at this meeting, put a resolution B change.
Yeah. So that was the standing, so it's not there.
Well, there's no amendment.
No, no.
Yeah, let's get Corporation Council's opinion on this. My understanding is that they've recommended that the resolution come to the board with that amendment. So their recommendation to the board is that this be passed with the amendment that they recommend.
Correct.
Not on there. But their amendment is not necessarily attached to the resolution as proposed to the board tonight. It's just their recommendation that it be passed with that amendment, so it's not.
But we can just pretend it's not there.
Correct, it isn't.
It isn't there. Yeah, it's not there. Yeah, that's your point.
Yeah.
And the resolution is just a standalone, what we have, and we can amend it
when we go back into session.
All right.
However, we choose and then.
So it sounds like there's, everyone's clear now?
Yeah. I think.
Is there anything else in, uh, committee of the whole? I'll take a motion to adjourn. We'll move. Second, on favor, by saying aye.
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 Um, so we're at now, motion, uh, number eleven. We have a motion to act on matters considered and recommended by committee of the whole, notice on the agenda above. Someone have a motion?
Make a motion.
Is it?
Bring it to the floor for discussion. An amendment of.
We'll do the amendment after we bring it up.
Do you have a, um, uh, an amendment that you're gonna offer to the resolution?
He's got the amendment.
She just wants to bring it to the floor.
It's to the floor, so it's open for discussion. Kim?
Should we vote first? Yes, to bring it to the.
Yes, all in favor by saying aye.
I, my amendment is to leave A and B, the two radio towers in, add LiDAR at the one forty, five hundred, and take C and D out. And that CD, I guess I don't have to say that they come back later, do we? Just take them out. They can all come back for the January, these other things.
So, so is your, is it clear, Corporation Council, what the amendment is?
I apologize, I was on something else for a moment, just making sure I was on the right page and I missed what Ken said.
Okay, so let's.
A and B stay in, verse, this resolution. C and D comes out. LiDAR is added. To that. And then the other things will, will come back, uh, individually.
We don't need to talk about.
And we don't even have to do that. We'll just leave it at that right there. So the two radio towers are in, LiDAR's in. That's the amendment.
Correct, is the language that you want for paying for the LiDAR system, I guess, is there a proposed language that?
Not to exceed one hundred and forty thousand, one hundred and forty-one thousand, say to make it simple. Not to exceed. So then each one has a number to it, don't they?
Forty thousand.
Yeah.
That's, that's your own gun.
Okay, so we have an amendment. We have a motion to make an amendment. Kim O'Connell, do we have a second on his amendment? Richard, you got it. Now there's discussion on Kim's amendment. Doug?
This time, I go back to corporate counsel because can't vote on just A than just B.
Correct, and that's not what was.
Now we're adding a different item into the bundle again.
So. Let's let Corporation Counsel answer Supervisor Rowdy's question. Kim is making an amendment to strike items C and D. Making an amendment also to add language which would fund, uh, the LiDAR system. We can't go through and vote, yes, I'm gonna pass the resolution for A, so when? If this amendment is passed, then the resolution changes. That's proposed to the board. So the board then is going to vote, if no other amendments are made, on whether those three items get passed. You're not gonna be able to vote yes on A, no on B, yes on C. That's. Fran?
I just have a question. If the LiDAR was not part of the resolution, are we breaking anything by throwing it in when there's no public knowledge, if that's something we're gonna?
No concern about the public meetings rule, because LiDAR was addressed, uh, by a number of the committees when they, uh, addressed resolution number fifty-seven twenty-one. So the amendment to add LiDAR does not change it in, change the proposed resolution to such a substantial extent without any notice to the public, where, uh, in my opinion, it breaks the, the public meetings notice. No.
Public question.
Okay, you call the question. Um, is we want a roll call vote? Or you guys just, you guys just wanna vote? All in favor of the amendment? Uh, signal probably by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Harry. Now we're back to the original resolution now as amended. Uh, call the question again?
Motion to.
Yes.
That's only two thirds of the budget.
This will require a roll call vote. We'll, we'll, uh, do a roll call vote on that. It requires two thirds to pass this.
Yep.
Tracy. What's the dollar amount that we're approving for ARPA funds? Can someone just tell us?
One million, five hundred and ninety-eight thousand.
So that leaves a balance of ARPA funds of what?
Now, about a million one.
Okay.
Start with Sharon Kelly. Yes. Kim O'Connell.
Yes.
Amy Middleton.
Yes.
Jay Luke.
Yes.
Ray Duncanson. Russ Arkham.
Yes.
Don Bonifat.
Yes.
Bo Demeling.
Yeah.
Brad Olson.
Yes.
Roddy.
Yes.
Keith Borndal.
Yes. Yes.
Richard.
Yeah.
Chris says yes to all. Passes. All right, um. Jason? Number 12, presentation, Polk County adopted swine capable regulations. It's gonna be quick. This hopefully is the last for a while.
No.
If you saw my postcard, I handed out to everybody, yeah.
All right, while Bob's handing that out, I'm gonna jump in. The whole capable amendment process started in the spring of 2020. There was a proposed farm, that Cumberland LLC that was proposed in Burnett County. They had applied for a DNR permit. The latest status update on that is they submitted a final application in May of 2021, is still in pending status, has not changed since May of 2021. But the county still went ahead and tried to create regulations that protect that as much of Polk County as they could, or at least create a procedure in that for a pool. And we created two maps, so before the 2020 amendments, you see the area here in green on the map is where swine capable would be allowed. And you can see that the town of Garfield, the town of St. Clay Falls, there we made them red because those two towns have livestock sighting ordinances in place because they also have their own zoning. But the rest of the area in that is almost wide open. With the zoning amendments that were enacted in 2020 by the zoning board, this map shows now the area in red which is prohibited from having a swine capable, and that, or it's gonna take and it's gonna require a rezone and a conditional use permit. But any of those types of. You can see the red areas in five of our towns, Sterling, Lake Town, Clam Falls, Lorraine, and Georgetown. Those towns are unzoned. The town of Johnstown actually has a bunch of egg 20 zoning, but our office has not been approached in that by that town taking to any rezoning. Their choice in that, and they've been the ones that decided to keep their egg. The town of Lincoln has a little bit of egg 20 in that. I'm gonna go through and read each condition, but the zoning ordinance amendment created 17 conditions that are prerequisite conditions. So if an applicant is gonna take and try to be sighted in Polk County, and that for one, they gotta be zoned egg 20, and the second thing that they've gotta do is obtain a conditional use permit, but before they can even apply, they have to meet these 17 conditions. And that, then it would come before the Environmental Services Committee at the county, and the committee could also comply other conditions as needed, and looking at it as a site by site farm, and that, because not every two properties are gonna be the same for it. So, we do have provisions in there and that for extra plans. We've also got ordinance provisions that would assess any of the cost of those studies and that back to the property owner. This is kind of a nice flow chart so that you can see on any property in the county what the steps would be in order to take and cite swine capable there. Basically, walking through this, they have county zoning, they've gotta be egg 20. If they're not zoned egg 20, they have to go through a rezone process, which then involves the town, and then they would have to go through a public hearing in order to rezone. And if they don't get the rezone approved, then. If they do get the property so that it is rezoned, and that, then it would come back to the ES committee, and we would have a public hearing, and ultimately that comes before the county board, just like you guys had three of them tonight. Once that's done, then they would follow through to a conditional use, should be the same as if the property was already, there's only those two green areas, Johnstown and Lincoln. If the committee approves the hearing, which involves an actual public hearing, then they would decide whether or not to grant the application. And that could be a conditional approval, it could be a complete denial, or they could approve it with some basic conditions. All the public comment that we've been receiving that is coming from a lot of our towns that are unzoned. And so if they don't have zoning, but if they are in a shoreline area, the county ordinance was amended to prohibit swine capable in the shoreline area. So the county ability in that to regulate a swine capable through zoning is covered. What we can do. If it's not a shoreline area, then it goes back to the town. What can the town do? Can do their own ordinances, and that, which would apply, or if they don't have any zoning, like they're unzoned, like those five towns I mentioned. So, we did do three public engagement processes, and that throughout this, back in the early 2020, Environmental Services Committee took and talked about this at numerous meetings. We also tried to take and consult with professionals in creating a livestock facility report. You guys have all seen all of this up to this point. There is three different ways that you can regulate a capable, and that, one is through a zoning ordinance like this, which does not have to be approved by DAT cap. Number two is a sighting law ordinance or a licensing ordinance, that does have to be approved by DAT cap. And we did go through this, and we found out that it cannot be species specific, that we have to open it up in that to all livestock if we're gonna go that route. And the other one would be an operations based ordinance, which really comes back to a conditional use process like we've got. But the legality of that, we've been told by our Corp Counsel, and that, that is not the most defensible way to regulate. That Supervisor Bonapri.
And the conditions and the map, have that all been scrutinized by our Corp Counsel?
Correct, and that, a lot of this was done in 2020, we just created the maps here and that in the last month, and that so that you guys could have a visual of the areas that are now prohibited with what the county board has done.
Thank you.
It's in my opinion, and that, that, those green areas, if you can go back to those. For the current one, town of Johnstown, if they wanna make their map more red, they're under county zoning, they can petition the county and that to rezone their lands into one of the other zoning classes. Same thing with Lincoln, that small portion that they've got. The town of Garfield and the other four towns here up in the top that are unzoned, they can adopt county zoning at any time, and then create their zoning map that would take and not include any egg 20, that's what I just.
Those four towns now, Jason, some of these conditions, why they aren't in county zoning is long time ago. I would sure hope that your office could really, to make this understood countywide, I would hope that your office would really meet with these towns and explain and urge them to get into county zoning. I know I've discussed that with Farmington. I hope you do that.
That's brewing here. For Joe to dance, Joe, come on. That was a nice tune.
Amy just answered. They don't wanna get out because they, this is one thing, now, what if we wanna afford our factory in that? Let that, we just accept that. They're just picking and choosing what they want, so they, if you get into county zoning, they have to take it all or none. And they don't wanna be in because they, they don't, that's their decisions to make. But I mean, they want us to protect them on one thing.
Well, the townships, though, the townships are fine, it's, it's the activists in our community that want that.
But then they should take all of that into consideration.
That was my, that was my card I handed out tonight was from one of our local activists, I'm assuming.
Yes, I've seen that.
I like that, that's what I got this month.
Yep.
That was the least amount of information I got in one month from Brad.
Good pitch, John, but they ain't gonna work in Clam Falls, we don't want county zoning. And, and not only that, we've, this argument's been had for three years, and if I farmed every acre of land in Clam Falls, I could not just, I, I, the state would not allow me to have a capable. It's as simple as that, there's not enough land in Clam Falls to support a capable. There's not enough land left in Lorraine to support a capable, and I doubt there's enough land in a couple of the others to support them. So it isn't just about where it is, it's about how much land is available in a, in a small geographical area. So we can be unzoned, but there's not a capable company in Clam. And there's one inland.
Supervisor Wornald?
You know, I attended the Sterling meeting last night, and they had a presentation from the coalition that they've developed, they've hired these people to advise them. But what amazes me is the towns, some of the towns that are in that can't have a capable. They've invested their money to develop something they don't need. It's disappointing to me that, you know, they didn't look into this before they spent their money. I mean, so, you know, Bone Lake is one, Buck, Eureka, they're all red. I mean, what are they gonna gain by developing an operational ordinance on top of the fact that they can't have one to start with?
My opinion, nothing.
That's, that's my opinion too.
What's really nice, and what we really considered at the beginning of this whole process, and with the committee, was, and that, to try to get involvement. You, you keep hearing public comment about people need to be involved, well, that's the great thing about the way this is done right now, and that, in our ordinance, is that most of the area, unless they're in two towns, and that they have a little bit of egg 20, it's gonna require a rezone. That means that they're gonna go in front of the town board first, people are gonna have an opportunity to speak. Okay, then they're gonna come here, we're gonna vote a public hearing, another opportunity to speak on the rezone, and that before the county committee. Then after that, they're gonna come to the county board, another ability to provide public comment. Then after that, they gotta go through another public hearing on the conditional use side, which then would give a really good opportunity to provide public comment. So it's a nice two-system check, and that, to make sure that the town is working with the county, and to make sure that everybody is notified because they basically have two different public hearings that are required to be noted.
That Supervisor O'Connell.
I think in Sterling could be more red because you have governor's land, and our forest lands up there also. If that was added, there wouldn't be much green in Sterling either. In, in, in land and water, tell us, a minimum capable needs over 1,500 acres to spread them and earn. Okay, just, I mean, that number should be out there too, you need 1,500 acres somewhere to spread this out too. So I mean, but I think if we dig our forest lands, and if there's any up in Lorraine and that, get that red also, there's gonna be a lot less green. Yeah.
Substantially less, and that's a good point, that this map is only based off from zoning district, and it's not reflecting ownership.
Yeah, so we should, we could, it would take off.
It takes a lot of Clam Falls, too.
It takes a lot of Clam and Lorraine on it. So I mean, some of those will lose quite a bit.
It'll take a huge amount out of Lorraine. I mean, not as, not as much as Sterling, but second to Sterling, I think, is Lorraine for county land, and there's a lot of state land.
Can we update these maps so they can show that, Jason, and then, you know, 'cause I think, one of the things I get is, I, I've had multiple calls every month with certain town supervisors, and I know Eureka, they're working on the CUP, they've kinda said, yeah, we know the CUP is the right process, I've heard that from multiple town officials over the last year and a half, two years. One of the things they've asked for is as they develop their own CUP process, will there be an opportunity to come back to the county environmental services, and with our Corporation Council, to review these conditions that maybe they'll put in their own CUP requirements that at least our county will look at that, and if we can assist them in their CUP process, and I've kind of assured them that, and I know Supervisor Kelly's gone to these and got some of that information, that we would work with the townships and review their CUPs as they approve them, is that possible, Jason, am I okay by saying that?
That's my request.
Yeah. We reached out, we had a, one township official actually reach out to each unzoned township and said, here's what we're working on. And that township official said he got an absolute no, we're not interested in becoming county zoning. So they, you know, Supervisor Olson was pretty clear tonight, it's not gonna happen in Clam Falls, Brad?
I just, I have a question, just to kinda refresh my memory. Okay, so I understand with the regulation, the zoning process is not subject to any DAT cap review or regulation, is what Jason just said about. But some time ago, wasn't this proposed to you, to DAT cap anyway?
Rezone is different than a request for a CUP.
In fact, about the CUP, that we have the 17 points. Last, late last winter, if I understand correctly, that was meant to DAT cap. And they reviewed it, even though they really don't have any space or jurisdiction or anything in it, and they did have a number of things that they recommended were not things that are probably gonna be enforceable, like having a five holder operator live within five miles. So we passed it with, kind of with those things in there.
I don't know that.
Yeah, I, I believe we did.
Yes, we did.
And I was just thinking, you know, for a CUP process, and us being concerned about what's going to be defensible or not, which we've had a lot of conversation about, you know, I don't wanna be the dead horse here, but, you know, we passed this with those things in there, we just gonna leave them in there and hope that nobody challenges that or notices that, or that never comes up? We're gonna kinda turn a blind eye to that, or?
Thinking that it needs to be clear that the DAT cap, Tim Jackson is our review agent, and that because it's not livestock sighting ordinance, they do not have the ability.
I understand.
And that to take and overturn it, they're just recommending it based off of his code that he will. And then zoning road, and that doesn't even reference ATCP 51, and that, so that's totally different, and that, it's no different than regulating a salvage yard and if you got, you know, tire or ten tires. Anyway.
Supervisor Olson?
It wasn't that, we took the Eureka ordinance and turned it into just swine and sent it DAT cap, and that's what they sent back. We never sent the CUP to DAT cap.
Yes, we did.
Yes, we did.
Okay.
Yeah, both one.
Tell me more about Jason's presentation tonight, Steve, did you have any other question? Amy?
The forest land thing, that, that would help a lot.
Put a forest land in there to make those.
You know, at the Sterling meeting, and I'm standing there and, and looking Sterling, how green it is, but then anybody that knows Sterling knows.
Could we, could we actually send that flow chart and these two maps out to every township?
Yep.
Where, even unzoned townships, so everyone?
Get the map first, get, get all the state and public plan.
Amy, you were asking for a question.
I have two questions, can you also remind me, is the CUP hog only finally? And wasn't DAT cap a little nervous about, you know, how come we cannot have, isolate a single species with an operation, but we ordinance, but we add with a CUP?
Correct. Right. And it's to save us, you know, segregating out a travel trailer wrecking facility versus an automobile wrecking. It's kind of similar.
Didn't the AD cap give us the kind of?
Cap, not DNR.
I know. But weren't they kind of like, eh, you might, you're a little sketchy there?
We got good lawyers.
Maybe. The, the, the desire of the committee and the county board was that they wanted to have some protections in place and they wanted to pick the best option as far as being defensible. Uh, I think any ordinance that you have could always be challenged, you know, no matter if it's really solid or not, so.
My follow-up question was, this seemed a little bit out of the blue, like why did this, why was this on our agenda?
Why?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I mean, you've been here, Amy, and you heard it tonight, we only had one public comment. But again, the public comment puts a spin to what we're doing. And we've listened to public, we had protesters out here for the whole summer. So why did, and I get letters like what you see on your desk tonight, this one, right? And you see the back of it, it's addressed to all of us. I don't know what that means. But the, the false info, the false information, Amy, I want to finish, you asked the question. The false information we've been getting from the people coming to public comment, and it's unfortunate they're being misled by a lot of people in the community or a few people. And I, I get it, I, I don't want a hog back here next to my house. I don't think any of us do except Supervisor Olson. Um, am I correct by saying that, it'd be okay? I don't want to overstep.
Oh, oh. You could get shot.
Well, la- later on, I'll expand on that for me and Steve.
But I think, I think, you know, that's why we brought in, I brought in a couple of local family farmers that have CAFOs over the last couple of months, right? I know you don't like to hear this.
I just, I.
You asked the question, let me finish, you're ignoring me and you're rolling your eyes because you don't want to hear the truth. And the truth is, is we have local family farms that have been here for generations that were attacked because they have a couple extra cows than Supervisor Olson does. And I think it's important for the public to hear the truth, not just from one side of the issue. And I gave you, I gave those people an opportunity to have anyone. Uh, there's no point of order right now.
There is, yeah.
Yeah, I don't hear your point of order, I'm not gonna see it. I'm asking, I'm asking her question. Why is it, I don't care, I'm not gonna deal with your point of order. No, I don't.
Our council?
No, I don't.
Let's hear you out.
Rules of order.
Yeah, the rules of order is, okay, corporation council, do I have to listen to their point of order? Presentation, um, you gotta ask a direct question?
It's in the rules of order, sir.
Yes, what is your point of order? What?
He has to step down, he can't be professing from up on his pedestal up there. He has to have John go up, then he gets in the conversation down here.
We're not voting on anything.
Doesn't matter.
You, you want me to answer the question that John, sure, I'll change, please, because I want to finish the question. Just clean that up.
Figuring I am.
Chair, may I ask, answer the question?
In answer to a question on the floor.
Yes. So, the reason it's on the county board is because of what we've all been seeing the last two years. We worked on something, we're moving forward. I, I, so I asked family farms to come in here and I hope this is the last thing. I think it was appropriate for staff to do a presentation on what we've done. We heard tonight, another public comment that we haven't done nothing. We didn't have any professionals. We don't, we don't do anything for the unzoned townships. I think it's very appropriate for Jason to show the map, so that's why it's on the agenda today. That's all it is. And hopefully this is the end of it. Thank you. Let me ask, answering the question, chair.
So you guys all have a copy of the maps in the handout. There's also a timeline of the, that expired over the last couple of years and the sample conditions are there as well. Sample, but the conditions that were enacted are there, so.
Appreciate the presentation, Jason.
Will you send out the updated one when you get the?
In that?
John, go ahead.
So in that updated map, uh, uh, would you also then include the areas like, uh, like they said on, uh, the, uh, Governor For, Governor Knowles? County forest lands. Yeah, that would make that map complete before it's set out, right gentlemen?
Yep. So you see?
If you include that flow chart?
Townships?
Be helpful for the townships?
Yeah.
Supervisor Olson?
Thanks for coming in on your birthday, Jason.
Birthday, birthday, birthday.
All right, thank you all, I think you've done well on this, so, yep.
Thirteen, there is no confirmation by the county board chair, how about Vince?
Yes, I have one that I'd like to board to approve. For the IFSL, which is the firing and facilitating library success, of which Mr. Pritchard is a member of that board.
You're being humorous there, I guess. No. It, it is actually, it is the initials only page. Formerly the Indian Head Federated Library System. Indian Head was considered critically incorrect, so.
I'm just reading it off their letterhead.
Who's the, who's the appointee?
Uh, Sue Durkoff, who's on the board already, her time, her time expires at the end of the year and she's been recommended, uh, by their system to come back and, and, uh, wants to do it.
We don't vote on that, we got that authority.
I, I think in this case, they, I think they asked for it.
Let's have a motion.
Yeah, I would still.
Motion, second by, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
I approve. So announcements and supervisors' reports, um, oh no, we're at the, uh, county board chair's report. Well, I talked enough tonight, the one thing I did want to say is, uh, I did talk with John Will this last week. He's the president, CEO of WITC, formerly, now it's Northwoods. Uh, he's gonna be coming to the county board in the next few months to talk about programming. One of the things we talked about was better signage, uh, showing the community that Northwoods is here, that the ITC is here. And, uh, I know they're gonna reach out to Mo, uh, they have a sign, they're gonna come and present. He's gonna come and talk to us about programming and, um, and then also I talked earlier about the resolution coming to general government and I think this is very important is, um, the performance ba- based pay. Basically, the resolution's gonna ask that the county administration, um, develop a performance-based pay process, uh, prior to next year. So it's a one-year process to allow county staff to work on that. And the other thing I guess I'd like to comment on, I've talked to Chad too about our scorecard, so to speak, uh, our math issues. One of the things I think we've been kind of not hitting the target on that was, uh, you know, the cops are doing the good job arresting these, uh, meth addicts that are criminals and we're losing track on district attorney and, um, the judges. So we're gonna try to tie that in better and, um, I think we'll just wait until we get that fixed before we get our updates. And, um, that's all I have for my chair's report. Vince?
Okay. Administration report, first I'll speak for, uh, Tanya, who asked me to make some points about COVID. Uh, last week, we had two hundred and ninety cases. That's concerning, but that is down from three hundred and fifty-seven the previous week. Uh, you, you know, you can't look at them day to day, you really can't look at them week to week necessarily because there are a lot of things that can affect that. The holiday season is upon us, we don't know, that could be bringing it down a little bit. I suspect afterwards, when my guess is going to come up. Uh, we have administered twenty-seven hundred booster shots through the drive-through clinics. Now they're offered here in the government center. I know if you go online, you can see, uh, you know, you can come in and get them, they ask for appointments, but you can come in and get them at any time that we're open. Uh, Omicron variant is the newest challenge. So far, most of the information's coming out consistently is it is highly transmissible. Uh, it's currently being assessed compared to others. Uh, there's still a lot we don't know, so we're encouraging people to be wise in getting vaccinated, booster shots, stay home if they're sick, get tested if they're sick and wear masks when you're in public, crowded places. Um, very exciting moment last week in environmental services. The environmental services, uh, area awarded land and water stewardship awards. And I, I wanted to point this out because these are people who exemplify, uh, what the kind of people we have here in Polk County. They are, uh, chosen to be winners because of what they do in terms of land management and water resource management. They're dedicated, uh, to committing their time and resources to improve our water, to improve our soil. Uh, first, the winners was the Horse Creek Watershed Council. The individuals awarded were Tim Johnson, Scott Carlson, Bradley Johnson, Richard Nelson, Craig Gustafson and Neil Gustafson. They received an award last week each. In addition, on the water side, uh, was Karen Engelbretson. She served as the president of the Polk County Association of Lakes and Rivers since two thousand and one. She's a Bone Lake Management District Commissioner and performed numerous statewide lake stewardship efforts. Uh, hats off to our folks in environmental services for coming up with this award and recognizing these people who are dedicating time and resources on their own, that's much appreciated. Uh, I've announced a couple of the committees this month, so I'll say here too, the sports and rec complex market demand study has been completed, but it's still in the process of finalizing what's included in that report. They sent it to us once, we sent it back because it did not contain all the information that is in the study. They kind of jumped to some conclusions, so I said, no, I want to see all the data behind it. I will have that next month. Uh, also, I'm very excited to talk about the broadband mapping and expansion project. Now, if you recall, I talked with, uh, Cliff Albertson, who has been working with broadband throughout the state, with the governor, with the previous governor and with the, the, uh, Economic Development Corporation of Wisconsin. We have developed a map showing where Polk County is, has good, relatively good coverage and where it has gaps. We've identified those gaps and as a result, we've brought in five local internet service providers, presented that map to them, talked to them about what they need and what are some ways we, the county and the internet service providers can partner to expand broadband coverage to those areas of need. So, uh, I did, I'm just excited to tell you that throughout the course of January, I'll be presenting the data as we get ideas formulated from these internet service providers in the county as to how we can help citizens in the county get high-speed internet. Finally, happy to announce, uh, that the Wisconsin Department of Justice has awarded, uh, Polk County their treatment alternatives and divergent grant, TAD grant approved for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's a grant just for twenty twenty-two and it will allow us to continue our TAD programs and improve outcomes for people, uh, dealing with drug issues. We're happy to have that.
Any questions for the administrator? At this point, we're going to, uh, we're gonna take a recess for fifteen minutes. Corporation council's gonna make a statement here before we take our recess.
Just gonna hand out a document for you. Um, it's going to be basically what we're gonna discuss in closed session. So I would ask that you read it during recess so that we're prepared to talk, uh, during closed session.
Do I need to make a motion to take a recess?
Got an idea how long recess or, uh,
Closed session?
Gonna be, that's about all we got left.
That's, that's all we have and then we're gonna adjourn when we come out of closed session. There's not gonna be any action. Is there, Joe?
I'm gonna talk at you for a bit and you can ask whatever questions you have.
It'll be very long.
You think we can just get it done?
Or not, well, he would like everyone to have a.
I want you to be able to read this.
Yeah.
Yep.
So we gotta stay on call. So we're back in order and, uh, one thing we didn't cover and we do have a couple of announcements. I will let the clerks go first. Oh, yeah, I do want to make notice that, um, Supervisor LeBong has to be excused.
Um, just a quick reminder for all of you to check your mailboxes before you leave tonight. Um, there's something there for you. Um, any of you are not considering running again, the, um, notification of non-candidacy form is due this Monday, the twenty-seventh. So please talk to me like after the board meeting today if you have a form you're interested in. Otherwise, the deadline to file your candidacy and nomination paperwork forms is, for the April fifth election is on the following Tuesday, January fourth at five P M. So if you haven't picked up a packet or downloaded one from the website, um, I have some available to serve again. Need help filling them out, we can provide you with some correction, um, as we can for anybody that's running, but we cannot fill out the books for you. Um, if you have any questions about candidate filings that have been already filed in our office, we are keeping them noticed, um, and updating those daily on our website. Um, at CO dot polk dot I dot U S forward slash elections and on our bulletin list too. So just so you're aware that those are now being noticed and, um, over a week.
Lisa, uh, announcements now from many supervisors. Brad?
An announcement today, I have my notice of non-candidacy right here. They'll be retiring at a point in time. Other candidates. Has some serious health issues, has asked me not to run again. Um, is number one.
Any other announcements? Supervisor Olson?
So me and Supervisor Wardall went down to the hog tour back in, um.
We weren't gonna talk about CAFOs anymore.
It wasn't.
Okay.
They weren't CAFOs, were they Steve? Nope. And, um, very nice, smell wasn't bad, smelled like farm. Fifty feet away from it, man blowing right at us, it was, um, smelled like farm. It was a very good, I thought it was very good, very interesting, very information. Hammer bacon they give you?
What?
They give you the hammer bacon.
All right, any other announcements? John?
Uh, I attended the TJC meeting last week. What is there, about fifteen people on that committee? I just urge everybody that, I think the TJC is the, is the best committee we got in this county and I urge everybody, if you want to learn something, try and, uh, attend one. And then I wanted to make announcements, I gotta take a leave for a couple of months. I gotta have radiation for about ten weeks, five days a week. I'll try and mount some other treatments to be determined. Thank you everybody for your prayers. I'll try and keep in touch on the, I think I can zoom on everything.
Sure. Appreciate it. And all that stuff, John. Dave?
Yeah, I was gonna comment on CJCC, like I mentioned, that, that there are so many elements involved in CJCC. It's hard to explain what all they do. Uh, so I would assume what we're gonna have to do is let the, the county know a little bit at a time as to what's transpired. The problem that they've got right now, one of the serious directors has not been appointed unless it was. But as of the last meeting, there was. Or they're promising that. The, uh, one of the projects, part of CJCC is, is, uh, programs in the, in the, and it's unbelievable what they're doing there with, uh, with improvement of prisoners. G E C, uh, education, they work with Northwoods for, uh, extended educational programs. These things are all improving. These things are all improving on, on the, uh, safety of our, of our prisoners. The other, one of the other points that they've been working on and they look like they're pretty well under, under total control. How they're gonna do with total control with any contraband and put in the, getting into the jail. And, uh, believe me, that's, that's an almost impossible feat to do. And I know there are prisoners, prisoner, you know, some prison wardens and stuff that worked at some of the major prisons in the country and, uh, they, that's one of their. But, uh, they're, they're doing an excellent job. They've got that. And some of the other things that are, uh, that will be coming up is, is the funding. These things aren't, uh, it's bypassed. They, you know, they're, they're, they're working on these very hard. Hence, and it's, uh, it's a tremendous group. Someday, we should, like Johnny did, we should also sit in one of these meetings and just listen. And I'm sitting there amazed myself. I'm trying to catch up on what they've been doing, but, uh, they would be impressed. Johnny would. Chat Saturday. They go in the water and that, uh, killed us.
Maybe what we can do is, uh, I know we have, uh, two outside agencies that have asked to come and do presentation. One's, uh, historical, um, society and then one's also economic development. But maybe we should put CJCC on there.
I thought of that, Chris, but.
In a few months?
I thought we would wait until we get a director in place.
And get their feet on the ground?
Yes.
So when the time comes, let's just, we'll do that.
I'm gonna do it.
Okay. Any other, um, announcements? All right. So do we have a motion to go into closed session? Joe? I can, Amy? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, why we're going into closed session?
Put it in there. See, we haven't. They have, uh, nineteen eighty-five, one.
Uh, pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen eighty-five, parentheses, one, parentheses, G. Closed session. How long did I think? Well.
That's one of them. Whatever you got.
I will back up. Uh, so we're looking for, uh, come out of closed session, looking for a motion to adjourn, Joe? Okay, second, second, in favor of.
I guess I like it.